The Wausau School District. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the final 2018-19 budget. And so Baba, take it away.
Sure. I have a slide show. It's about fifteen slides long. Some of this you've seen before. We can go through maybe a little bit more quickly. Some of it is new. We knew there were going to be some surprises in number, not surprise in type. We knew that the voucher program was going to reveal the data and third Friday account, some of those things. So nothing really should be a surprise, other than maybe the amount might be a surprise. But since you all looked at the packet, maybe not going to be a surprise. This is the calendar that we've been looking at for the last several months, and we're at the end. So tonight's the final opportunity to adopt the budget and adopt the levy after hearing from our taxpayers earlier. This is an exact slide that you have seen already. This is what changed from last year's mill rate of $11.12 up to the annual meeting. At the annual meeting, we knew that some things changed with our budget. We knew some things changed with our levy. We knew some things changed with our mill rate. We made pretty good projections. We thought the mill rate was going to come in at about $10.97. It's an exact replica of a slide you have seen before. This is a brand-new slide. This is what has changed from that annual meeting of $10.97 to today at $11. And there were a couple of swings that went back and forth. That private voucher revenue limit that gets revealed October 15th. We'll have another slide on this one, but it was about $600,000. Last year it went up over $1 million this year. So that was a huge increase of 70.67% in the amount of money that we're going to tax. We're going to transit to the state and to all the voucher schools that are participating. Pretty severe increase this year. We'll talk about that on a separate slide of its own. More state aid. State aid did go up 0.58%. It was in two different categories. One was exempt personal items aid, and one of them was state equalization aid. But altogether, we pegged that one pretty close. Went up 0.58%, which caused our levy to go down. And then the certified property valuation, we thought it was going to be 4.02, and ended up being 3.94. So very accurate on that one, barely moved the needle. So all of these things together, the final mill rate that we're asking you to authorize tonight is $11, down from the referendum and down from last year. One thing I feel obligated to point out, especially if you ran the packet before today. Before today, if you have a packet in front of you that's maybe old, this page in the packet, it's page 11 in this portion. I don't know the entire packet. It's maybe page 12 or 13. There was something up here that indicated a change in Fund 39. Fund 39 is where we account for all the referendum debt. And we suggested that because of defeasance, this changed, and that all those changes happened prior to the annual meeting. So after the annual meeting, nothing changed in terms of defeasance. You might recall last year, between the annual meeting and the final budget adoptions, some things did change. This year, we revealed our defeasance plans a lot earlier, so nothing changed in Fund 39. And then it captures all the other changes. The voucher program change is captured here. Open enrollment revenue coming in went up. Open enrollment expense going out went up. That's an indication of open enrollment is being used more. And it's being used more in the out direction than the in direction. You're going to hear about that a little bit more tonight as well. It also captures that personal exempt computer increase in aid and some of the other aid increases. But you'll also find out everything is offset. The 3077, 3077, 3077, 3077. This is still a balanced budget, exactly balanced. Fund 27 changed in very insignificant ways. A closer look at the revenue limit worksheet. You know, this is good for math geeks like myself. The revenue limit I've explained to you before is a perpetual math problem, right? It starts out with a number, and then all kinds of independent variables get plugged in. And the one dependent variable at the end is the revenue limit. And it comes from pupil count. It comes from revenue from debt service, and it comes from revenue from Fund 80, our community service fund. All kinds of different things make up this revenue limit worksheet. I'm just going to call out a couple of significant portions of it. This is not in the revenue limit worksheet. I created this. It tells me what our total FTE, which is membership or enrollment, but not kids in seats necessarily, enrollment for revenue limit purposes, what it has done over four years. The four years measured, because the three old years and the three new years are compared, so rolling three-year average. It went up 50, it went up 13, and this year it went down 46. Okay, so 50, 5, 46. What's probably more important for revenue limit purposes, this three-year rolling average. So you take last year and the previous two, and this year and the previous two, and you compare them. And when you compare the rolling averages, our FTE actually went up five. So enrollment going up is one way you generate additional revenue limit by enrollment going up. But at the same time, it's important to understand, we've got two exemptions over here that just got zeroed out. Those were pretty big numbers last year. One of them was a declining enrollment exemption that you get to recapture if your enrollment's going down, and one of them is a hold harmless exemption that you get to recapture if your entire revenue limit goes down. Last year, each of them were about $380,000. It takes the sting out of declining enrollment. It takes the sting out of years when the state issues different declarations where the revenue limit goes down, because it protects you against both of them. We lost those protections this year, even though our rolling average did go up. This is another important part. That's the property value of all of our property in our district, businesses, homes, everything. We projected it at 4.02. It came in at 3.94. So that's gotten pretty easy to project over the last few years, so we're really close. Here's one that we didn't project very well. We had no reason to believe that the open enrollment voucher exemption was going to be any different than it had been in the past. We think there's a trend, but we didn't want to stick around. So we just used last year's number of $601,000. We understand that if that goes up, it doesn't impact our budget. It doesn't impact the amount of spendable money we have available. It does impact how much we levy, and then we transit it to the participating schools. That went up to over $1 million. And I said I had more. There's even more yet, because I've got a slide just for that, because I think people need to know that. This needs to be called out, and we'll talk about that more. Defeasance, that's the opportunity to prepay callable debt in the name of managing your mill rate and managing your levy, and also at the same time, saving lots of money by prepaying the debt, just like your car payment or your home payment. Prepaying the debt saves a lot of money. And then this one's a big number that's going to get a lot of attention. That's an 11 flat mill rate, 11 right on the nose, down from $11.12 last year. That's $1,100 per $100,000 of assessed value. Here's the voucher program. This one deserves some attention, so I've got a slide just for this. If we add together the special needs vouchers, this is the first year we had any special needs vouchers from our students living in our district, and all the other 131 students living in our district that access vouchers, not including the special needs vouchers. They could be students that were already attending voucher schools. They could be students that are new to voucher schools. We don't know that. The DPI doesn't tell us. They just tell us, we have access to over $1 million in revenue limit capacity that we'd be almost foolish not to exercise, because otherwise we'd have to take out of the rest of our budget. We taxed the $1 million, and we send that to Madison by way of a reduced aid payment on our last aid payment. Think this way. If we were going to referendum, we'd be talking about a 10-cent impact or 15, a 26-cent impact. That would be pretty significant. So the impact alone for those voucher students, 26 cents or $26 on $100,000 in our home. And when you put it in that perspective, it's sizable. Now, of course, that's not money that's taken out of our budget, but it's money we have to tax for. We get blamed for taxing, so to speak. We get recorded as our tax, but we don't spend any of it, spend on vouchers. Here's another deduction in aid that doesn't get as much attention, because it's been happening for years. This one's handled a little bit differently. We don't get additional revenue limit authority for the Milwaukee Charter Program. It just gets deducted off of the aid amount in the amount of about 1.5%. So statewide, everybody gets dinged about 1.5% of their aid amount. So that's the aid amount you'll see on the revenue limit worksheet. Why not that? There's some adjustments, but this is a big one. Milwaukee Charter Program, we got deducted $876,000 of aid to fund that program. Gets a little bit less attention. It's been happening for years.
About 20 years, right?
Fluctuates a little bit, 20 years or so. But that one doesn't get as much attention, but it's a good place to fit this one in, right next to talking about the impact of the statewide virtual choice program, which we've just called vouchers.
And they take that off the top before they even figure anybody's aid, isn't that right?
No, the aid is calculated on top, $57 million. Then we have some small adjustments. Generally speaking, this is the big adjustment to arrive at, the $56 million we get in aid.
So altogether, that's about $1,900, and what do I have here? About $28,000?
I mentioned defeasance, and I think this, these four or five slides might be the most important for tonight, because you haven't seen them for a while. We saw them much earlier in the spring when we talked about defeasance. This is what our debt profile looked like before we tackled any of the callable debt. So we talked often about that 2023, 2024 opportunity. Now, this is calendar year levy. So 2024 calendar year levy, we would set that levy in the fall of 2023. So in fall of 2023, we set the levy for 2024. That was that next big opportunity for a referendum or a decrease in our mill rate. Last year, we did this. And this blue went away and was replaced over here. Everybody see how that works? So we just called some debt. So our mill rate's going to go down a little bit, because it's not the shaded part. Now it's the green. That's our minimum obligation. And this year, we're proposing this. So we're taking away this purple and paying it here, and you think, wow, mill rate's going to shoot up. Now, keep in mind, you spend more money, you get more in aid. You get more in aid, you levy less. So overall, our levy did go down. This is just a portion of our levy. We levy in Fund 10, Fund 39, and Fund 80. Fund 80 stayed flat. Fund 10 went down. Fund 39 went way up. But Fund 10 went down, so we still went down from 11, 12, down to 11. So this represents flexibility. This represents sort of an option. The green is the underlying debt service that you're obligated to pay. The purple, we can manage up or down any way we need to to manage our final mill rate. So think of the situation we're going to find ourselves in next year. Remember, the green is the obligation. That's our debt obligation. It goes from up here, down to here. But if we can call some of this debt, we could perhaps add on. We've got blue, we've got purple, maybe next year it'll be pink or something, right? And we'll bring that up as far as we really are comfortable to manage our final mill rate. If our Fund 10 mill rate is going to drop, maybe we can tackle more in Fund 39 levy. If our Fund 10 mill rate is going to go up, we tackle a little bit less. But we've got that option. This purple band could have been as big or as little as we really wanted it. What I drew up at the time, before our annual meeting, was to make our mill rate go down 15 cents. That's what my attempt was, go down from $11.12 to $10.97, but then some numbers changed. It went back up to 11. And next year, we'd find ourselves in a similar situation. Maybe we would say, so let our mill rate go down another 15 cents, perhaps from $11 to $10.85, by manipulating the pink, right? If that's what we're going to do. I don't know if it's going to be pink. If I remember this conversation, I'll make it pink intentionally. Okay? So now, that's important to consider when talking about a referendum for perhaps 2020. Now, a referendum for 2020, this is before any defeasance opportunity was leveraged for 2019 fall. Remember, 2019 fall, a year from now, we're going to set this levy. And we're probably going to borrow from some of this green to create a pink bar that goes up here. And if we borrow from some of this green, all of these guys are going to get smaller. And think about the red brick. That represents $40 million in new borrowing in 2020. So a 2020 referendum, in the amount of $40 million in callable debt, would cause our mill rate for debt alone to go from here, I don't know what it's going to be next year, all the way down to this. We could be talking about referendum impact being negative. We don't know for sure what the Fund 10 levy is going to do, right? But if we hold it steady and make that assumption, we know Fund 80 is going to go up a little bit, because we're losing some grant opportunities in Fund 80. But we're in a really enviable position to manage our mill rate and manage it in perfect unison with potential 2020 referendum, that opportunity, instead of being in 2024 like we thought it was going to be, is now pushed up to as early as 2020. Of course, if we're in the middle of a referendum, we're going to have to be able to answer the question comfortably, what if it's a no vote, right? Because the taxpayers and the voters are entitled to no. What about a no vote? If it's a negative 50 cents for a yes vote, what's a no vote? And we're going to have to tell them, maybe negative buck and a half. But we're in a really good position. But I mention it now, because this conversation should probably start now and continue throughout the winter and next winter. Any questions on this slide? This is a big one.
The pink line that'll come next year? The subsequent green after that, like 2021 and forward, those would decrease, right? So that whole white brick that drops commensurate with whatever we put forward?
Yes, I think we could probably assume something like this would happen. Look at how big these purples were.
Right.
Right? We could probably tackle this amount of volume, so to speak. So if we take that amount of volume and shave it off the green, depending on which ones are callable and which ones are, I don't know off the top of my head, you'd probably, this one's already down there. That's the year in which you'd be defeasing. So you'd be adding to this instead of adding to this, because this is your new baseline. This green and subsequent greens would all be chiseled off in about the amount of this purple, or maybe more. If you really wanted to do more, you could do this amount and the purple, kind of like we did more this year. And think about how this was able to happen. Aid went up. I have the numbers in front of me. Aid went up 1.9 million. Now, the aid went up, because everybody in the state got a little bit more aid. Maybe you've been reading the newspaper articles. But probably more important, because it was strategic, the aid went up, because we spent more. Your aid is based on your Fund 10 and your two Fund 30s. So you spend more on debt retirement, you're going to get more aid. That's why when schools are in the middle of referendum, they talk about, sure, it's a dollar of an investment, but we get maybe a dollar 30 out of that dollar, because you get aid at 30 cents.
It's going to be interesting to see where that comes in, because in my opinion, right? You talked about strategic, long-range planning. Where that plan intersects with those numbers come 2021 equals great opportunity. And that's not just nibbling around the edges. I mean, that's significant.
That is significant. And I wish I had the number in front of me, but it's in one of your board reports. The amount of money that we saved was, I have 590, I think, here, $600,000 we saved in interest. Taking that purple and paying it now through the defeasance. And you'll see another formal action in probably February, where we take the actual defeasance resolution. You see that?
Are you seeing other districts? When you talk to other business people from other districts, are there people taking advantage of this opportunity, or is this kind of neat?
Has to be a perfect storm. Certain things have to be present. It's not present everywhere. Sometimes the board and the community don't have the stomach for it. I spent some time in an old district that didn't have the stomach for it. They said, no, when we voted for that referendum, we thought this was going to be the debt structure, and that's what we signed on for. By gosh, that's what it better be. So don't mess with the debt structure, prepay. So it didn't go anywhere because of that. The board felt strongly against it. So more and more, I think, they're doing it. This is a sheet you have seen before, but these are official numbers now. This is what the Department of Revenue says the equi值value is for each municipality. There's the number you see on the revenue limit worksheet. You thought it was going to go up 4.02, it went up 3.94. That's the amount of the levy, which did go up 2.83, even though our mill rate went down. Our levy did go up a little bit. Here's what the levy did per fund. General fund levy went way down. We knew that was going to happen, because we got way more aid, right? Fund 38 didn't change much. That was based on our original debt structure when we issued debt for the revenue limit exemption. Fund 39 did go up significantly. Remember, it went up $3 million, because we're defeasing more debt. As a matter of fact, in the 1718, there was probably $3 million of that was defeasance. So we captured that and another $3 million for the levy to go up 2.83. You're going to be voting on this later, and then you're going to be voting on total expenses by fund. This just tells you by fund, the fluctuations. Fund 10 expenses, not the levy. The levy is just part of the revenue that supports the fund. Fund 10 expense up 1.72, and you can see the outlier is Fund 39, which our debt service went up significantly because of the defeasance. And this is all in your packet as well. Then it brings us to motions that we would ask you to consider tonight. One is to approve the final budget, and in a separate motion, to approve the levy.
Any questions or comments before we move to the votes? Everybody followed okay?
Yeah, I understand this stuff perfectly.
You did a very nice job, Baba.
Yeah.
You can do my personal finances better. All right, so I will be looking for a motion. I'll read the motions to you. And one point is that this must be approved by a two-thirds affirmative vote. So it has to be ayes in order to pass. So the motion is to approve the final 2018-2019 budget as presented below. Fund 10 expense $103,267,503. That's in parentheses, $93,498,772, plus transfers to Fund 27 and 38, close parentheses. Revenue $103,267,503, so it balances. Fund 27, $15,866,466, in parentheses, $6,143,912, plus transfer from Fund 10. Other Fund 20, $821,631. Fund 30 expenses, $15,198,142, and revenues $15,102,392. Fund 40 expenses, $4,951,381. Revenue $15,000. Fund 50 expense, $4,913,383. Revenue $4,771,000. Fund 80, $908,516, and that's levy, fees, and carryover. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved. Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The second motion, and this is for the final levy. Again, this is a two-thirds affirmative vote. The motion is to adopt a final tax levy of $45,389,177, representing $29,845,762 for the general fund. $15,056,215 for the debt services fund, and $487,200 for the community service fund. So I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion. I believe that it was $47,389,177? Or has that changed?
It's 45. You ran off an old one.
Okay, so that's.
Okay, this is on the script as the correct numbers.
Okay, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is a request for a closed session pursuant to state statutes. Bar grating parameters for student transportation contract negotiations, and that's under state statute 19.85 sub 1 sub E. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and Cassie, run the roll call.
All right, Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Rouge?
Yes.
Mary Tao?
Yes.
Lance Trollop?
Yes.
Lee Webster?
Yes.
Trisha Zunker?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Yes. All right, let's adjourn to upstairs. All right, everybody seated. It's 5:52, and so I would like to call to order a meeting of the Education Operations Committee, the whole of the Wausau School District. And I begin by reading the following statement. In this meeting, board members will, in many cases, be hearing information presented to them for the first time. Their responses will, in many cases, be extemporaneous and should not be considered either their final opinion on a matter, nor should any opinion expressed by an individual board member during any meeting be considered the opinion of the board as a whole, unless it is presented by the presiding officer as such, and I would only do that after the board had reached consensus. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of September 24, 2018. So I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And a second. Okay, any comments, additions, changes that you need to make for the minutes? Hearing that, I'll go to the vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The next item is the employee handbook update, and I will turn that over to the vice president and be back in the room when this subject is over, because both myself and Lance Trollop have, to be able to be heard, have a conflict on this.
Okay, so Mike, do you want to talk about those again? This is the second.
Sure. You have in Board Book, you have two copies of the recommended changes to the handbook. One copy is the redlined, strike-out version, and the other one is a, beyond that, is a version without all of the edits. What we've done is reflected, to the best of my recollection, we've reflected in the changes since the last time you saw this, everything that the board suggested. That includes changing all the hises and hers and he's and she's to neutral articles. We took out the oversight of the portion that said proof of bereavement leave. We struck that completely. We went to the leave will be granted for individuals per event, as opposed to just a strict limit on the number of days. And basically, we opened up the policy so that in the case where employees do need additional bereavement days beyond what's allocated by the bereavement leave in their bank, they can make application to the Human Resources Department for additional days that will be moved from their sick leave into their bereavement leave.
So I'm probably one of the people that had a problem with the bereavement leave. It seemed to me like when I saw that sentence that struck, being able to automatically take it from your sick leave, that that seemed like something was being taken away. But as I've thought about it a little bit more, and I thought about the mechanism, how you can request, I asked a lot of questions about how you could request extra bereavement leave, and it's not big, long forms and things that you fill out. It's simply sending an email to you or whoever is in that position and saying, hey, this is what happened, and I think it can be worked out fairly easily. There's a certain amount of trust that's there, but since we've talked about it as a board, I'm assuming that if people are having any kind of problems, they'll refer that up the chain, and if they're not satisfied with what's happening, we'll hear about it. So after talking about this and talking to different groups about changes to this policy, I'm satisfied with the changes as they're listed here. Anybody else have anything to add about bereavement leave?
I had been contacted by a number of teachers after our initial meeting discussing this, and there was a lot of concern. And I think that Dr. Hilt sent out an email that was clarifying and helpful, and I think that was good. My concern, though, is changing something in the year. When they're already working in the academic year, and we make these kinds of changes that they don't get to contemplate, as opposed to changes that would be made for the next academic year, they're not comfortable with it. They don't have to accept those changes. They can make other choices. So I guess my question is, how, is this a common practice, to make handbook changes during the year, and our employees just have to? And our employees just have to accept those changes as is, as opposed to for the next academic year?
I would, the history of it would be that a handbook came into play after twenty-eleven, after Act Ten. Before that, a lot of different things that are contained in the handbook would have been negotiated items, like, um.
Personal leave?
Yep. Those kinds of things. Um, but I think unless you're going to deal with all the handbook changes in the summertime, or the spring before, you wouldn't, the contracts start, um, before we. Yeah.
Well, we could, we could make them so that they'd be effective the following year. But I don't think, if it's not some, a new restriction, I don't see why they would.
The history was that they typically, the handbook updates typically came out to the board about October. Our intention is to, for any other handbook updates that are recommended to the board, we would do that in the spring of the year, so that we do exactly what you're suggesting. By August of the year, the new handbook is already known, understood, comes out with the start of the contract.
And then remember, not everybody is on that same contract that teachers are on. So that, that would be a concern maybe for one employee group, but for the rest of the employee groups, it would not be. So I see what you're saying, but I, I don't know if they're major changes.
I mean, I, my, my perspective is, changes, whether they're good or bad, should be something that one could contemplate before accepting that employment for the next year. It just feels like kind of changing the rules in, in progress.
At what point do we ask people to return their contracts for next year? Do you have a timeline?
Two years, isn't it?
Actually, they just went out to teachers.
Um, so for next year, when will we ask teachers to kind of commit for next year? I should say it that way.
The actual signing of their contract is happening right now.
Okay.
For this school year?
For this school year.
Right.
Uh, but we, we know their intentions. Uh, we've asked, for example, that anybody who's anticipating retirement, let us know by December first, so that we can post those positions. We expect a commitment by May or June, um, so that we can move forward with our staffing and posting of positions if people are, are not returning.
Right.
But as you well know, we have people moving around through the summer.
I'm a little surprised that the contracts are signed so late, because there are, um, fees associated with breaking your contract. And yet, if they haven't signed it yet, you don't have a commitment from them.
So we have teachers right now, you say that their contracts for this year are just going out?
Yes.
So we have teachers coming in today who are not under contract?
Yes.
What is the reason for waiting?
The hiring process, uh, the number of personnel we have in the HR and business offices, that, that transition, everybody over to the new year involves payroll changes, involves, all the new hires have to be, uh, put in, in the system. That backs us up.
So that doesn't happen by the first day of school, or first day that teachers are working?
No, we, we continue to have new employees coming in.
So is just the new employees that haven't signed their contracts, or everyone?
No, it's everybody, because what's happening is, uh, Randy Lewandowski has to roll over, along with payroll, has to roll everybody over to their new position, if you will. It's not a position like a new job. But transfers take place, people moving from one campus to another. Pay increases take place. The people who move on the compensation model, that has to be reflected. And all of that takes a lot of time. And that can't happen until July first. So they basically start the, start transitioning to the new contract year, July first. That gets, all of the work around that backs up contracts being available until this time of year.
Wow, that seems like an awfully long time. And I probably don't understand the process. But it seems to me like teachers should be signing their contract, and have that signed contract by the first day that they're working. Is there something we can do to improve?
We have to move back the, the process on the, on the points. We have to get negotiations done with the union earlier. Because I know we're negotiating mid-July still.
Yeah, the points is a, is a big piece, because we allow people to continue to earn points until June thirtieth. So we can't even begin the process of knowing how many people are moving until that window closes.
So what would happen if you backed, I mean, I don't want to talk about something that we, we're not agendized for, but, um, I'd like to talk about that sometime, because maybe we can move that back to May thirtieth. I mean, that would give us that month.
May thirtieth, sorry for interjecting, but, May thirtieth might help the teacher compensation model when calculating points and new placement. But the fact still remains, we're hiring teachers right up until the school year starts and even beyond. And we're in a statewide climate where more and more of that's happening. Teachers are moving in the last minute. We're seeing it way more than we saw even three years ago. And that contributes to the problem as well. I don't see fixing the points part alone, getting us contracts out the door anywhere. There are too many other things that are still in flocks when the school year starts.
But don't, don't the teachers sign a letter of intent? I mean, I, I can't.
New, uh, employees to the district are, yes.
And what, and what about, um, already, um, hires? I mean, you're already employed here, but don't you have to give some kind of verification that you are coming back?
No.
Just if you're leaving.
The what?
Just if you're leaving.
Right. They notify us if they have the intention of resigning.
Well, I know I've been gone a long time, but I know in this, you don't have to say. In the spring, we had to, we had to sign that we were coming back. Um, that, you know, we intended to stay employed with the Wausau School District.
But something doesn't even smell right.
I mean, to me, then, then that's how, when people, you know, leave in, past June fifteenth or whatever, and get fined, that's because you already were expecting that they were coming back. I thought you had some kind of.
We expect, we, I, I'll have to check on that. But we expect everybody is coming back unless they notify us. And so if you notify us past June fifteenth, then you do pay liquidated damages.
And, and we're, I think we're talking then about the same thing. We used to do something formally, but now it's kind of in reverse. If you've not notified, um, the district you're leaving, then you are going to be, um, fully employed the following year, so.
And our principals are having those conversations with employees to know who's on the radar for possibly leaving.
When do contracts expire?
June thirtieth.
June thirtieth?
Right.
Well, the, yeah, the last contract day, a hundred and eighty-seven days.
If I was an employee, if I was a teacher, whomever, that my contract ends June thirtieth, and I had incurred a bunch of educational expenses from previous years, if I give you my resignation post-June thirtieth, I'm not under contract, how can you penalize me?
Say that again, Pat?
If I incur five years' worth of higher end, ongoing, whatever it is.
Yep.
I got ten thousand dollars, and part of that rule is you gotta stay here a certain number of years.
Three years.
My contract expires June thirtieth.
That's only for administrators, teachers don't.
Well, no, I just, when is a teacher contract? It's not an evergreen, right? It, it expires at some point, that's what we're talking about.
Right.
So if it expires June thirtieth, and I give you my resignation July fifteen, I'm not under contract. How can you penalize me for whatever that I may owe you in liquidated damages?
Are we starting to get into an area that we should be discussing in another meeting?
Well, I, I just wondered. I'm trying to understand this contract process, because, and I had raised that I'm not comfortable with changing the handbook when, uh, during a current contract. So I think it's just trying to understand this whole process.
So the contracts they're signing now say July first, twenty-eighteen through June thirtieth, twenty-nineteen, correct?
Well, different contracts say different things because of the start dates. So a teacher's first day would be the August date that they start their contract, a hundred and eighty-seven days. And, and it would end on, the day a hundred and eighty-seven days later.
Okay.
So the question is, when do you want to implement these changes? In year or at the beginning of the next year?
Could we do it once a year?
Well, I think they want to change it now. But I, 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 my position is it should be the next academic year. Because even if they haven't formally signed a contract this year, I mean, they're, what are they going to, leave their job, leave their classrooms?
If I could, uh, in, in my previous district, we, we tied, um, policy changes to the handbook. And so as we made policy changes, technically that changed the handbook as well. And that would happen virtually every month. And so we would just give updates. So, so changing handbooks mid-contract term in a school district really is not uncommon.
Well, and I think all of these are to the benefit of the teachers. I don't think any of these are negative items. I think that these are all pluses for them, and, and change is, in a positive way. I don't think there's anything here that is taking away anything. It's, it's giving them more latitude, so.
So if now you can use it for dental appointments, do you really want to wait till next school year to be able to do that? Probably not, once you've heard of it.
Or if you have two parents die in the same calendar year, and you've got more flexibility, where in the past, that's been an issue for some people who've lost both parents in the same calendar year. I, I'm fine with the, the way it is.
I am too.
It seems to me, it's, there is generousness to their advantage, and why would we wait? And actually, potentially in a way penalize some of the, some of the teachers. I mean, it seems to me that, uh, if it's going to be their advantage. If they want to renegotiate and talk about it, we can, we can do that later on, but let's go ahead with it.
And we can change it, I mean, if, if we come up with some change that is going to be a negative impact, we can say, well, with this one, we're gonna implement it at the beginning of the next conference.
And I think, on, on your point, Trish, with insurance and dental and all of that, we would never change it during the calendar year. That, we, we do that at the end, and we have a committee of district employees that help with that. So I'm okay with what we're doing.
Mike, I have a, I have a question. Can I go down to the sick leave part, or are we still at the bereavement leave?
No, we can go.
Or can we just ask any questions right now? Is this handbook only for the teachers?
No.
Does this include, like, support staff, municipal employees?
It's all employees, but there are different sections for different employee groups.
Okay. And which employee group are we looking at for the sick leave right now? Just the teachers?
No.
Everybody?
It does, to my knowledge, it's not everybody.
Well, the first portion.
Because there's some stuff missing.
The first portion of the handbook applies to all employees. Then there are separate sections beyond that that break out exceptions or special circumstances for, for different employees. So anything that's in the general section, which is this section.
Okay.
Well, applies to all employees.
And then I'm gonna ask the same thing with the bereavement leave. Does the bereavement leave have other subsections for other employee groups?
No.
Okay, so that one's for all, right?
All, these pages that you're looking at are for all.
So the sick leave section, just what I'm seeing here, that's just the general section that's for all. But there's still some subsections that are missing, right? That I, that I don't see here.
No, what I'm trying to communicate is that whatever applies to all employees, applies to all employees. Those things that are addressed there are not addressed, again, later in the handbook for different groups of employees.
Okay. Thank you. I, the, the reason why I ask is because, um, I'm hoping that I can talk about this later in our board workshop, is, um, there are different, uh, reimbursement options for sick leave when you retire. If you fall, uh, in the category of administration, uh, teachers, uh, support staff, uh, municipal staff, and I, I will bring that up at a later time. I just wanted to know if there was anything else that was missing from the sick leave policy in the handbook that would apply to all those different categories that I just shared?
That, well, that, yes. Those kinds of, um, retirement benefits are addressed in a later part of the handbook.
Okay.
And I think the reason for that is, before there was a handbook, before Act Ten, everybody, each employee group negotiated their own contracts. So some of that stuff was negotiated. So then when they went to the handbook generously, they didn't, like, lump everybody together. Probably could have, and changed that, but respecting those, what those different employee groups, I hope I've got this right, respecting what they negotiated and saying, we're not gonna change that, but it's gonna be different because of whatever your last contract was. Does that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense, but there, just one last question for clarity. And I should have done this before the meeting, I apologize. Are custodians, do, do they have a union? Are they part of a union?
Not currently.
Not currently? Okay.
They have.
In the past?
In the past.
Before Act Ten?
After.
After?
Some.
Okay.
And annually, they need to recertify. And they didn't have more than fifty percent of the membership to recertify.
That helps. Thank you. I'm done.
Okay. So anybody else have any comments on any of the other handbook changes? We talked about bereavement and sick leave. Are there any other sections that? Okay. So then, I would make a motion to recommend to the full Board of Education the approval of the updates to the employee handbook as presented.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Would be Jeff and Lisa. Uh, motion carries? We can call them back in.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda, it says twenty-eighteen, nineteen, student demographic report. And John.
So, uh, good evening. You all have a copy of the two thousand and eighteen student demographic report contained in or book. Um, if you would like a paper copy, we can certainly provide one to you after the meeting. Let Cassie or myself know, and we'll, we'll get that to you. Within that, the student demographic report, you can see that there are some highlights on the, on the first cover page. I think the, the first bullet point says, overall, K-12, we're down about a hundred and one students. A hundred and one students were down, um, overall. If you factor in our 4K in early childhood, that changes to about seventy-six students that, that were down, uh, with that. The other bullet point there is, uh, on this past year, we attract about eighty-six percent of available five-year-olds to our kindergarten programs. And the four-year average is about eighty-eight percent. So we've remained very strong and very consistent in, in that area, in those statistics. Another, uh, bright spot and fastly growing area that Mr. Hahn can speak to is Wave has nearly, has more than doubled in its enrollment, has gone from thirty to sixty-five full-time students. And if I have the right data point in front of me, that, uh, that sixty-five students does not include another fifty-nine part-time students with that. So overall, Wave is serving well over a hundred, a hundred and fifteen students in some capacity or another. Are those accurate?
Yes. Okay. And, and this year, twenty-two of them are open enrolled into the district, or people coming back who are open enrolled up.
So also on there, there are several tables and graphs relating to open enrollment in and out of the district. And you can see that, um, movement, uh, second to last bullet point there, the number of students open enrolling out, total, meaning new students that declared this year, as well as students that were already open enrolled out, that has increased by about sixty-one students. But then also, the number of students open enrolling into our district has increased by nine. So we're seeing both groups grow a little bit. So the net difference is fifty-three students more in open enrollment have left, left the district this past year than.
John, are we still, am I looking at that right? A hundred and fifty-four would be the net, we're down. Two eighty-nine coming in, and four forty-three going out in total. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm on page twenty-three?
Page twenty-three, okay. So the, on page twenty-three, it is new and existing open enrollment students going out of the district. And that is four hundred and forty-three total students. That's the number you're referring to?
Yeah, and then the two eighty-nine is coming in?
Yes, those are students coming in.
So one fifty-four, rough and tough, Bob, what is that, a million and a half dollars? In theory, we're losing on aid?
Not necessarily.
Well.
It's way more complicated than that. As a matter of fact, our students that live in the Wausau School District and open enroll out, we count them for revenue limit, we count them for aid. So we collect revenue limit out, and we count aid on them, and we transit money to the receiving school. and we transit money to the receiving school district. If you take that argument to an extreme, 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 if you lost every one of your students through open enrollment, you would tax $10,000 each for every one of them and you would transit $8,000 to the receiving school districts. And you'd have a very low-position budget with zero students. So it's just an extreme to illustrate how that works. The students that live in the DC Everest School District and come here, DC Everest counts them for revenue limit purposes. DC Everest counts them for aid purposes, but they send us the money for open enrollment. So it's not quite as simple as just saying, we lost that many students and we lost the money that comes along with them because we still get revenue limit on those district kids.
So net-net, 154 students that we are, I'm going to say down, for lack of a better term, that has what effect on us financially?
Hard saying, because when you lose a student, you don't cut staff. And when you lose a student, you don't close a building. When you lose a student, so with one student, if, let's say, the first year open enrollment started, we'd have none, and you had one student in open enrollment. To illustrate what happens, you would have that student living in your district. You're rolling average, three-year average. So the first year, you'd only get to come a third of that student. So you'd raise revenue about $333,000. But you would have to transit about, I don't know what the open enrollment amount is, it's 7,500 or so. You'd transit 7,500 out. So for every one of those students, if you take the 154, you cut it by a third because you have to count them every year, right? So every year, you get a third of them. The next year, you get another third. It's a three-year before you get the full impact. If we round the 154 to $50,000, or 154 to 50 students, $500,000, and how much would you spend on the 154 students? You'd lose your revenue of...
I'm just trying to...
And I wasn't prepared to do this, but I'm...
No, I'm just trying to understand. If we're down 150 students from open enrollment, year after year after year, is that to our benefit financially? Or is that to our detriment financially? In essence, should we care about this? Should we be doing everything we can to keep those kids here?
If you could reduce costs when your enrollment goes down, it would be about neutral. It really would. It'd be about neutral. You would maybe even probably lose a little bit on them. But what happens is you lose a student, you don't cut any costs.
Sure, because you've got so much fixed versus the variable.
It's not as painful as you might think. It really is. The open enrollment system is set up to not hurt you as bad as you might think. You lose the student, you lose the revenue, but you lose the cost too. But we know what happens when you lose students. You don't always lose costs. That's the hard part.
And you don't always lose them for the entire year. That's the problem.
Yeah.
Well, Bob, how about this? At what point should we care about that number? Like, is it 250, 500? When do you start being concerned?
I'm worried about it more as an indicator than anything. I'm worried about the finances because that's a tough expense to see go up, 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 up. It's an expense that's going to DC Everest, it's going to wherever. Through the state, of course, we don't pay them right to them. And expense was up, up.
Doesn't a decrease in enrollment actually help us too? When it comes to the whole, your whole formula that you have?
There's one way, a decrease in students.
More spending, decrease in enrollment, it seems like that whole...
Decrease in students makes you look wealthier as a district. Because you've got the same property value unless stores start closing down because these students are leaving. But per student, you look wealthier. You have fewer students to spread it. So if you look wealthier, you're going to get less state aid with less students. But keep in mind, the students that live in your district is what we measure.
But you can balance that by spending more money, right? Taking on more debt?
Yeah, that's a different issue, but you...
But it's another tool or another thing that we can do to...
I get what you're saying. That helps.
It's complicated.
So perception of the district is what you're more...
Exactly. But I look at that, and I look at the trend over the last five years. There are probably some comparables in the state that we could look at their data. But we're a large urban district surrounded by a lot of rurals. So Appleton probably isn't a comparable because there are a lot of other urbans they could go to in that area. Marshfield's a comparable, Stevens Point's a comparable, Wisconsin Rapids, Eau Claire, those are some of the comparables. Eau Claire is probably a pretty good one because Jipwo Falls is right there. And we've got DC Everest right there. What's happening in these other urban population centers? Is it open enrollment out because everybody wants to get away from some of the things that come with urban schools? Or is it open enrollment in because people want the opportunities that come with a larger school district? So we probably could take a closer look at what's happening with the Eau Claire's and the Marshfields and the Wisconsin Rapids. But to me, it's just a disturbing trend. Finances aside, ignoring finances, what's happening that more people want to leave than want to come in by choice?
I always wonder that myself, and I don't know that we have a mechanism to survey these people. I know because the online option for some, they do it because it's bullying. And for homeschooling, sometimes it's religion. For both, sometimes it's twice-exceptional kids that their parents don't think we're offering. Because most gifted programs aren't geared towards twice-exceptional kids. They're for gifted, self-motivated kids. And knowing those reasons why they go could help us plan to try and recapture them.
We did make an attempt to do that, and I won't say exactly what the results are. I don't know them off the top of my head, but a point of clarification, the students that live in our district and pursue private schools or pursue homeschool, they're not counted in open enrollment. To be an open enrollment student, you have to open enroll to another public school district in Wisconsin. So the financial impact on losing a student that we used to have and now goes to homeschool is different. Or now goes to a private school. And then if they take a voucher or not, it depends. But if you think about a student that was ours and now they choose to go homeschool, of course, you'll lose the student and you'll lose the expense that goes along with it. But never can you cut that much. You lose revenue in every way with that student because you don't get it back by counting them in revenue limit or aid. Right? You don't have to spend open enrollment tuition to go to another school either. But it's pretty convoluted. There are a lot of different ways of losing students. And probably the open enrollment ones set up the most fair.
Well, and along those convoluted and lots of things that go into play with it, one aspect of the open enrollment numbers that you see leaving out or coming in, it would play the other way for the other district. Some of those students going out of our district may never have attended one of our student, one of our schools or our sites. They could have lived in Everest, moved to Wassa, and before they ever enrolled in Wassa, filled out open enrollment paperwork that says, I want to go back to Everest. So while it looks like, oh, we had another student move out, they never really came to us to begin with other than physically moving into our area and going back out. Now, to Bob's point, why wouldn't they choose to stay here? That's a consideration. It's something we want to take a look at. But it's a piece of data to consider when you look at those open enrollment numbers. And that's that note on the bottom of, I believe, page 26, no, excuse me, 25 for yours. The analysis of transfer students. Those are students that have actually sat in a seat in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different students and probably set up the most fair.
Convoluted and lots of... One aspect of leaving out or the way for the other district, some of those students, they could have moved to, filled out open enrollment, I want to go back to. So while it looks like move out, they never physically moving into our area, choose to stay here. That's a consideration to get. But it's a, get those open enrollment. That note on the bottom of 20, process of transfer students. Those are students, the analysis, that have actually sat in a seat in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
Five for yours.
Students and probably...
Convoluted and lots of... One aspect of leaving out or...
Set up the most fair.
The way for the other district, six, no, excuse me. Some of those students, they could have filled out open enrollment, I want to go back to. So while it looks like move out, they never physically moving into our area, choose to stay here. That's a consideration to get. But it's a, move to... That note on the bottom of 20, process of transfer students. Those are students, the analysis, that have actually sat in a seat in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
Get those open enrollment. Now, I believe, page 20.
Students and probably...
Five for yours, leaving out or... One aspect of...
Set up the most fair.
Six, no, excuse me, the way for the other district. Some of those students, they could have filled out open enrollment, I want to go back to. So while it looks like convoluted and lots of quickly moving into our area, choose to stay here. Yeah. But it's a, that's a consideration. Move to... That note on the bottom of 20, process of transfer students. Those are students that move out. They never sat in a seat that have actually, in a Wassa school district. Get those open enrollment.
There are a lot of different...
I believe, page 20.
Students and probably...
Five for yours, leaving out or... One aspect of...
Set up the most fair.
Six, no, excuse me, the way for the other district. Some of those students, they could have filled out open enrollment. They could have, I want to go back to. So while it looks like convoluted and lots of quickly moving into our area, the analysis, but it's a, choose to stay here. That's a consideration. And that's move to 20, process of transfer students. Those are students that move out. They never... That note on the bottom of... Sat in a seat that have actually, when you look in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
I believe, page 20. Get those open enrollment. Five for yours.
Students and probably...
One aspect of...
Set up the most fair.
Six, no, excuse me, the way for the other district, leaving out or... Some of those students, they could have filled out open enrollment, I want to go back to. So while it looks likely moving into our area, the analysis, but it's a, that's a consideration. Choose to stay here. Numbers. And that's move to 20, process of transfer students move out. They never... That note on the bottom of... Sat in a seat that have actually, when you look in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
Those are students, I believe, page 20. Get those open enrollment. Five for yours.
Students and probably set up the most fair.
Six, no, excuse me, the way for the other district, leaving out or... Some of those students, one aspect of, they could have filled out open enrollment. So while it looks likely moving into our area, the analysis, but it's a, that's a consideration. Choose to stay here. Move to 20, numbers. And that's just a transfer student move out. They never... That note on the bottom of... Sat in a seat that have actually, in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
When you look at, I believe, page 20. Those are students, I want to go back to. Five for yours.
Students and probably...
Get those open enrollment. Six, no, excuse me.
Set up the most fair.
Leaving out or... Some of those students, one aspect of, fill the open enrollment. They could have... So while it looks like our area quickly moving into, the analysis, but it's a, that's a consideration. Move to 25. Choose to stay here. Numbers. And that's just a transfer student move out. They never sat in a seat. That note on the bottom of... That have actually, in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
I believe, page 20. Those are students, when you look, five for yours. I want to go back to.
Students and probably...
Get those open enrollment. Six, no, excuse me.
Set up the most fair.
Leaving out or the way for the other district. Some of those students, fill the open enrollment. One aspect of... So while it looks like our area quickly moving into... They could have, the analysis, but it's a, that's a consideration. Move to 25. And that's choose to stay here. Move out. They never sat in a seat. That note on the bottom of... That have actually, in a Wassa school district.
There are a lot of different...
I believe, page 20. Those are students, when you look, five for yours. I want to go back to. Get those open enrollment.
Students and probably set up the most fair.
Leaving out or... Six, no, excuse me. Some of those students, go away for the other district, fill the open enrollment. One aspect of... So while it looks likely moving into... They could have, our area, but it's a, that's a consideration. The analysis, 25. Move to numbers. And that's choose to stay here. Move out. They never sat in a seat that have actually, that note on the bottom of...
There are a lot of different...
I believe, page 20. In a Wassa school district. Those are students, five for yours. When you look, I want to go back to. Get those open enrollment.
Set up the most fair.
Leaving out or...
Students and probably...
Some of those students, go away for the other district. Six, no, excuse me. One aspect of, fill the open enrollment. So while it looks like, they could have quickly moving into... Yeah. But it's a, that's a consideration. Our area, 25. Move to... The analysis, choose to stay here. Numbers. And that's move out. They never sat in a seat that have actually...
School by school projected enrollment, and we watched that enrollment all through the spring and responding accordingly. A great example last year was John Marshall kindergarten numbers in February, March, and April were relatively low, indicating one section. And by mid-May, all of a sudden, we had enough students we revisited. And by June, when we added another section. So we're constantly watching those numbers and making sure we're responding very proactively.
Thanks.
Okay, anything else? This is not an action item.
Correct.
All right, well, thank you very much for the report. And now we move on to what could be an action item. And this is a discussion of the development of a resolution to bring forward to the WASB regarding the development of and funding for early childhood programs for children from birth to age three. And did you all have something to present on this? Or Lee, you were the originator of this. How do you all want to start? Did the administration have a... Okay, go ahead.
I didn't necessarily originate it. I think it came up as part of the discussion here. And Jane offered that there was a possibility of ours as an organization or as a board, making a presentation or having a resolution that we would present. And with some of the information that we've recently received about the impact of nurturance and early childhood literacy, experiences, attachment, all those sorts of things, and how that sets the whole stage for the children going in through their whole lifetime in education. It just seemed to me that it was a logical thing to present and suggest that the WASB considered.
Do we know what programs are available? It seems to me, and I don't know a lot about this, that there are county programs for birth to three? Is anybody aware or... I believe there are.
I don't know about the county, but through North Central, that's... Okay, now, we don't pay into North Central for dental services. I think we just recently found that out. I don't know if those pro...
They become our responsibility when they turn three. So if North Central Healthcare has a child that's been referred, the county takes care of those fees until they become three years of age. And if they become three years of age in October or November, we assume that responsibility. Am I correct, Andrea?
Yes, but I'm also going to look at you because I think this has a special...
We start on it.
There's an evaluation. We start two years, six months. But yes, when they turn three, there are special needs.
And that's why a couple of our centers now, And that's why a couple of our centers now, we have children that we service beginning at three. But I think we were thinking that we need to have some kind of a program for all children, that they've got some early literacy things, whether, isn't that what we're talking about, Lee?
That's what I was thinking about, based on a couple of the presentations that I'd heard, was that, for example, if a parent puts a child on their lap and reads to them even from infancy or sings to them or talks to them or develops an attachment, as opposed to, for example, a lot of parents now are using the television as a stimulant in the babysitter, there's a huge difference in the way those children, the children that have those close attachments develop, and their actual brain size and function increases significantly, so they become potentially much better students, and it will literally impact their entire lifetime. So my thought was that, I don't know that we necessarily have to be the one that develops it, but it would be really nice if what would happen is there'd be some initiative that would take place that would involve multiple community sources, but the source and the place where they could be presented would be in an elementary school that's in the parent's neighborhood, and parents could, and parents could be encouraged and help to develop those kinds of experiences with their children. It just seems to me that it would be a logical step, and this is simply a resolution that would go to the state and potentially might have some impact statewide.
Is there something drafted? There was some language in your October 9th email that isn't exactly a resolution and speaks to all of those issues. That's what I was referring to, I had to look up really quick.
Normally, we get the resolutions from WASB, and then we all decide, you know, whether we want to support them or not. But we have the opportunity now to actually create and...
We've always had the opportunity. We just have to start quite a bit earlier than now because they have to be in by the deadline. But by my sitting on this board, I can bring one to the next meeting.
Oh, would a good place to start be to investigate, maybe through Spotlight on Education or something, some of the things that are happening in our community that we might be able to form partnerships with and be aware of? For instance, one thing that comes to mind is that Lena Start program, have you heard of that? The Lena Start program is through the library, and it has the monitor that the baby wears and it counts the number of words the parents say to them, and then they try to increase the amount that they talk to them. That has a huge impact on kids coming into our district. And maybe what we need to do is just be, not a resolution, but be aware of what's happening in our community, that we can develop some partnerships as a K-12 education group and just know what's going on and steer people to those things. Family Resource Center, I know there's others that I'm unaware of, and maybe that's the place to start is, but I think...
This type of resolution is to ask WASB to support any legislation that comes up. It's not like a resolution that we would send to Madison asking them to do or not do something. This is to ask WASB, if this legislation comes up, we would like you to support it. And I think part of the reason is, you know, we have all these good programs, but they're in one spot, and it's hard for some people to get to those spots. And we also know, because I'm a person with two autistic kids, that the sooner we start with those kids, the sooner the change happens. And really, three years old is kind of late in that path to even start.
So the WASB resolution process isn't, isn't a resolution to say, hey, some legislator, go write this bill. It's more or less, it's more or less supporting or not supporting one that's already been... So we would really be looking at trying to get the legislator on board with this to create the legislation, to fund birth to three like they fund four, you know, fund three-year-olds like they fund four-year-olds, or something along those lines.
So we'd be telling WASB that this is important to us, and they would be looking to give that message out to other districts to find out if they're on board as well, so it becomes more important to WASB, more people that sign on.
Because when they go out in those packets, we talk about them, and that goes out throughout the state.
And WASB already has, in two different sessions that I've gone to, they've had presenters that have talked about this. So why not put it in the form of a resolution and get the statewide organization really moving behind it, was my thought.
So Beth, what you were talking about is a little bit different thing to inform ourselves on what's actually going on here. So with this, what's the timeframe, Jane? When would this ideal get to them?
I have my phone in the car, so I don't have, it's like November 12th or 13th that it, the next meeting is.
Going up pretty fast.
And we can always, you can always put one, it can be introduced from the floor, and then you have to get like a two-thirds vote for it to even get discussion. But it's something to, even if we don't do it this year, that we can get the ball rolling and get it up and running and have it firmed up for next year and get it in on the regular cycle.
Actually, my thinking in proposing this was that, as a board, we've had the opportunity apparently to do this in the past, and we haven't taken that step and taken an initiative. So why not take that first step and jump in and see what happens with it?
Okay. So I guess my first question is, Lee and Jane, would you be interested in drafting some language with the help of the administration? And then the second question will be, will the board support that?
I think it's very important.
I actually like Beth's comments about having a spotlight on education, on early childhood development. I like that. I think that that allows us to, at the local level, understand what other collaborators are out there. Because I think there's quite a few.
That Lena Start program is something we should all know about. And I think that...
And that's something we can...
At a future...
On the board workshop.
Tonight.
I have my next...
We can go ahead and discuss that then. Okay, so are you two on board to get it going?
I'm willing to.
All right, and that sounds good to everybody else?
And I would think that you really want to get with Kara, the early childhood director, that she would be the one that could really help you draft that, and that's her expertise, right, Andrea?
That's right.
Right, okay. So she would be a real powerful asset.
Great, thank you very much. Is there anything else? All right, so I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
Second? Anybody not in favor? If you're all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.